City Council meeting, September thirteenth of twenty twenty-two. We appreciate you joining us this evening. I would like to excuse Councilman Kreston, he's away on some personal business and so. Wish you well on the trip. We started our meeting this evening with Councilmember Severing, giving us a thought or an invitation, and then leaving us some reflections for the religions. So, Councilmember Severing, yeah. I'm going to give an invitation.
Heavenly Father, we assemble this evening as our liberties and freedoms give us the opportunity to do. We collectively give our thanks this night for the rain that has fallen this day and pray that we might be able to receive what we need for the upcoming year. We give thanks for the liberties and freedoms that we enjoy and for those who thought that we might have them. And we give our prayer of faith for those people in our community who are in need in any way physically, spiritually, physically that there might be blessings to attend them. May this night be an opportunity for us to express thoughts and feelings of collaborative nature. We give thanks again and pray for this in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
If you'll repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Severing. As we begin our meeting, I would ask if any of the staff or council have any potential conflicts of interest that need to be disclosed this evening, or items on the agenda? I see none, so we will proceed. With a consent agenda, we will now hear from Dylan Hill, our Public Works Inspector. He's going to talk to us about final acceptances on the Ward Farm Space Three subdivision and the Northwood Hills subdivision. So, Dylan.
Good evening, how are you guys? Tonight, starting off with Ward Farm Space Three, all the improvements have been completed. They're up to the city code and standard. The one-year conditional period has come and gone, so this is a recommendation on behalf of the city engineer to release all the remaining funds and accept the subdivisions back.
So that's your recommendation?
Yes.
All right, Councilor, we'll be looking for a motion to approve the final acceptance of Ward Farm Space Three subdivision. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
So moved by Councilmember Barker. You got a second?
A second now.
Second by Councilmember Severing. Thank you. Are there any further discussion, questions, counsel? All is in favor of approving the motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. All right, Dylan, let's move on to Northwood Hills subdivision.
Yeah, so Northwood Hills subdivision, same thing. This is Phase Two, though. There's still Phase One that they have some improvement items that they have to work on, so we're not not addressing that, just the Phase Two that was done a couple months after, and all those improvements are of the city code and standards. So, two separate bond, two separate subdivisions. So, this one's for Phase Two on behalf of the city engineer. That's what we recommend.
All right, so Dylan has recommended final acceptance of Northwood Hills subdivision. What phase is that again?
Phase Two.
And Phase Number Two?
And so, Council, this is where Phase One plan was in your packet. So, usually bringing it up just for, just for visualization, but it is Phase Two that's being approved.
To make sure the motion is, Northwood Hills subdivision, so I want to emphasize it was Phase Two. Before we do that, Dylan, are they making progress on fixing the issues on Phase One?
Yes, the only issues they have right now is a little bit of curb and gutter. They already proposed a fix for it. They just have to come and do the work. So, all that money is still held up on that. They've got the design. It was more getting the elevations of the curbing gutter to solve that drainage issue.
Council, we have a recommendation before us. We have a motion to approve final acceptance of Northwood Hills subdivision Phase Two. You have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Councilmember Swanson. That's second for that motion.
Second.
Councilmember Dowpass for that second. So any further discussions or questions? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And you propose? Motion passes unanimously. Well, now, ever, thanks for all you do and the team over there. We appreciate it. So now enter to our active agenda, which allows for public comments. John, if you would watch online, see if we have any comments. Those online, if you would just rate, and John will then qualify to make your comments. Those who are here with us this evening in person, you do come up to the podium and state your name. And if you're a resident of North Ogden, and please keep your comments under five minutes. So I'll try to be kind when I remind you if you get too close. Five minutes. So we'll now proceed with the public comments.
Good evening, Susan Climates. I am a North Ogden resident. And Councilmember Severing, I'm not sure if you are going to announce this or not, but the Bill Barker Park Committee met today at the hollow and went over the different things we want to do on Saturday. And just want to remind the council and invite you and the citizens of North Ogden to come and help us on Saturday, seven thirty to eleven. We're going to be wheel whacking some spots. We're going to be moving garbage out. We're also going to be that's all. I, until last week, I had never been down in the hollow. And if you haven't, well, Councilmember Barker's been there, but it's a wonderful place. I remember having a place like that when I grew up, and it's kind of still there. It's the it's the, it's not Longview. Is it Longview that's on Elbert Drive? Okay, that, that was my hollow back in the day. But it is magical. It's really wonderful and it's kind of secluded, but magical at the same time. And we kind of want to bring that back to, to the city of make. Of course, we need Barker Park, the ones who play. So, Saturday, seven thirty to eleven, bring your weed eaters and work gloves and, oh, and you can bring your big loppers too, because they're going to be cutting down some branches.
I think we've made some progress on the noxious weeds and some of the things there. Will you need a truck from Public Works or Parks to load the stuff on?
I would have to.
No, we're good. Okay. Spencer Stevens is providing the trailer. Okay.
Councilmember Severing.
It is a beautiful place, and I hear the phones, the chrometry down there going to stand. They let out.
Thank you.
It is a very good place. All right, thank you. Anyone else here have? Oh, kindly.
Mayor Councilmembers, my name is Brent Burrowman. I am the director of your North Ogden Community Band. And I reside with you, sorry. But I want to know, how many of you have heard about the band or attended one of the concerts? Good. Glad to see it. Purpose of the band is to support the city and provide musicians a place to play and prove their talents. And we believe that this is being accomplished. We support your parades, we support your evenings in the parks, we do concerts, we support your better state activities, variety of things, based on whatever you ask, you do. The city has always, has always supported us. Watching this band has been an immense project because of the scope of the band, and especially after adding the jazz band to it, has been incredible experience, and your support has been welcomed and appreciated. We have a lot of equipment that has been brought in because of the nature of the band and things that we can do with the band. Currently, we're rehearsing at the Center, Senior Citizens Center on Thursday at seven o'clock. Is the best, it is the best place for us. We have approximately about forty musicians that show up at the band rehearsal. So parking is, is a, sometimes can be an issue, especially with forty cars showing up there. Both bands rehearse at the same night. We only take one night. The symphonic band, which is a bigger band, starts at seven o'clock and goes to eight thirty, and then the jazz band starts at eight thirty, goes to nine thirty. And each, each of those times is very critical in preparing the band for concerts. The band is a very, very good band. I conducted a lot of bands in my time, like community bands, and this is by far one of the best ones I've seen. We were able to do a lot more difficult music and everything, which brings the musicians a better talent and also improves their talent. However, we have an issue. Members of the, of the committee of the Senior Citizens Center or individuals, we're not sure which way, has decided to have dinner and entertainment center on Thursday night during our, during our practice, even on our practice time. This is something we did, we had received no notice about. And so I haven't, I haven't received a notice because my wife saw it somewhere and then sent me a text message saying, hey, this, this is what they're doing. This is, and so, but this is, this is the first time we've had an issue with the, with the Senior Citizens Center or the committee or the individuals running that as far as rehearsals go. One night we showed up and they were having a tax completion night or whatever it was, and we didn't know anything about it. We walked in and since we started rehearsals, so we just started, so we started practicing. We did accommodate them two weeks ago with their dinner and entertainment. We just got through a heavy series of rehearsals and a concert and everything, so we needed some administration to take care of them, so we were accommodated by that. But it seemed to me that accommodating them on their deal, it seemed like we gave them an inch and they took a mile. We're looking, looking at this, the event of the dinner and the entertainment on Thursdays unacceptable to us. We need that rehearsal time. The band, the big band only has an hour and a half a week. And in order to accomplish what we need to accomplish with that, we need every minute that we possibly get. We, we have asked, we've tried to support the seniors down there. We've asked if we can play for them. We've been denied. They, now we've been told that they don't go out at nighttime. Okay? We've asked for a little bit of storage space and just a tiny storage space that we can store some of the equipment in for the percussion, because it's large, not large, but it's cumbersome to move. We can store something down there, just, just, it's not very big. We stack the boxes on top and we can get almost everything we need in there. That's been denied. At Center, the, it's, the Center is a good place for us to rehearse because the people, when I give directions on where to find us, and we give directions all the time, because people want to come join after they hear us play. It's easy to find, and it's easy for other people to get to. This issue that we've had with, with the issues about the timing of events being backed up against our rehearsal schedule, we were not asking for much. We asked for one night a week. Starting at seven o'clock on Thursdays. Thursdays, it was a poll we took with the musicians. It was the best night for everyone there to, to meet that night at seven o'clock. This issue, like I said, this issue must be resolved, because we cannot go on with this type of thing of getting our rehearsal times bounced. When we set the time, I tell musicians that we start at seven o'clock, we're there, we're starting at seven o'clock.
I'm going to have to let you know your five minutes, so.
Okay.
So if you'd like to conclude quickly?
Okay. I just want to know that who's in charge down there? Is it the council? Is it the Senior Citizens Center? Because we, we, we're acceptable group. We, we don't, we don't, we make sure everything is straightened out when we leave. We're just asking some assistance.
Yes, I got Councilmember Dowpass. We have then a council there. That is a city-owned building. So the city is responsible for scheduling there. We're aware of the situation and we are working on it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, John had a comment. Randy, can I call on John for a minute?
You bet.
No, you can stay there.
I was just saying that we do have two online if we're ready for those.
Okay. So after Randy, we'll go to
Randy Win, North Ogden. I just had a question in light of the events down in the sister city down south of us here with a cyber attack. Are, are we insured against that as well? I just got worried about that.
Yes, we are insured, and I did have a conversation with the treasurer because we're in a lighthouse situation with major dispersments on buildings, so I have had that discussion, and Mr. Call is also aware of it, so we have insurance and we're making sure that our controls are in place. Thanks, Randy. John?
First, we have Sarah Lansing.
All right, let's hear from Sarah.
Thank you. My name is Sarah Lansing. I am a North Ogden resident. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. I am commenting as the chairman of the North Ogden Parks and Trails Community Committee. I wanted to update you, the council, and also the residents of what the committee has been doing lately. As you know, we're a community committee made up of residents who care about the North Ogden Parks and Trails. In March, we did a service project in Oaklawn Park where forty-three people came. We finished the last section of the trail connecting Oaklawn Park to Barker Park. We also cut back trees to make sure all the stair handrails were clear and accessible before summer. After completion, the city used Sterilite to sterilize the new trail from weeds, and it's still serviceable and in working condition. We had a private donor who donated enough money to provide refreshments at the events, wood chips for the front beds, shirts for the committee members for, for future projects, all the materials to mark the trails and paint for future projects in the, in the park, such as bridges and fencing to be painted when they need it. The committee designed four metal signs to guide people through the trail, and the Parks Department installed those, installed those four signs recently. It's now marked the start of the trail, or at the start of Oaklawn Park, at the fork separating the mountain bike trail and the walking trail, which you can also bike at, at the end of Oaklawn Park, and at the, at the start at Barker Park Drive. And these things also have the mileage between the both parks, and it tells you how many minutes it takes to walk to each park. We finish with our efforts in Oaklawn Park for now, and we have shifted our focus of the commu, of the committee to outreach to Wadman and Lowenview Park, the next two parks to be renovated with new playgrounds. We want to let the residents know, we want to know what the residents want at these parks and have community input and discussion before the city makes any final decisions on what they will look like for the next fifteen to twenty years. While the committee is not tasked with deciding what will go into the parks, we want to give feedback and help the city to, of what the community wants and needs in these parks. So we're holding a public meeting open to everyone, including council members, residents, and even non-residents on October third at seven PM at the library. Anyone is willing and encouraged to give suggestions, ideas, and feedback on these new playgrounds. So we, we hope to see all of you, and we encourage you to join us on October third. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Sarah, and we are very appreciative of all you do in the city for parks and trails, and let us know what we can do to support. I think I responded that I won't be able to attend that meeting. It would be good for you to come in and talk with Councilmember Barker and John, so that you understand what the budget is for the park, and so you can kind of get an idea of maybe what's available.
Correct.
I encourage you to do that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
John?
We have Susan Kilbart.
Susan?
Good evening to the City Council attendees and my fellow North Ogden residents. First, I want to say, Mr. Mayor and Battalion Chief Barker, you're looking awfully dapper tonight. And congratulations to Ryan on his well-deserved promotion. Now, I just have an interest that I want to bring to everyone's attention. There was formerly a Facebook page that was established by our former mayor that became defunct and turned into the North Ogden City One supposedly official North Ogden City page. I wanted to bring to your attention to the fact that citizens, citizens and residents are not able to post on that official page, and I think that's a travesty and an injustice to our citizens to not be able to share things that are going on of interest in our community. For example, the Northview Senior Center hosting a health fair where they are giving flu shots and doing other health-related activities. And I would like to know, I have written to the administrators who are unknown to me, which is also, I don't understand that, what's to hide, and received nothing back on my request to make this Facebook page available for all of us to share if it's representative of our community. And that's just a request I am making for you to consider, please.
Okay, thank you, Susan. And we can shortly post out there who the administrators are, John. I don't think that's problem.
No, it's, it's you, me, and Jamie.
So we really have two, because I don't know how to answer this.
Yeah, and, and I did see that email this afternoon, and I hadn't had a chance to respond to it yet.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else online, John?
Not with their hand raised.
Okay, is there anyone else here this evening that would like to comment? So if you'd like to, if you'd just step up to the podium here and give us your name, and if you're a resident of North Ogden, or you came in late, we're limiting comments to no more than five minutes.
Yeah, I was just going to go to the library, and I know, yeah, they got the meeting tonight. I was just going to comment on Eagle Mountain. Did you hear about that?
Yeah, Randy Win actually just brought that to our attention about their, I think it was one point three million dollar deflation.
Well, it said one three, and that says one point one three. But, yeah, yeah, they, they got an email.
Can you please state your name?
Ron Silver, North Ogden, twenty-three hundred north. And what I understand is they got, everything's got to be done electronically and emailed, and I'm the old way, I still mail out checks and that. Not all the time, I'm transferring. Anyway, they got an email saying, hey, we need the funds, and, but we got a new place to transfer to. I think that was about on the fourteenth or fifteenth, and then it posted the next day. Couple weeks later, their vendor or somebody says, hey, we need money to pay our vendors and our employees. We sent you the money. And then I dawned on them, then didn't send it again. So what they suggest is make sure when you send it to somebody, and, and cash bank, the same thing happened for six hundred thousand, where somebody called in, it was a home builder, I thought it was a home builder that laid it in. Says we need the money, and he'll just transfer it to this other account, and they did, and then they found out. But if you do have something like that, they say if you catch it within twenty-four hours, usually get the money back. And forty-eight hours, you got a pretty good chance of getting the money back if you go to the FBI and all that. But after that, it's good luck, I hope you get it back. But it's just saying, everything's so easy, and, and my grandkids can do tech a lot better than I can do it. But all it says is just transfer it over to this other account. Sure, I can do that. And then they transfer the money, it's gone, and just make sure it's in the right place.
Yeah, we've relooked at our policies and, because ours, as we mentioned earlier, there's so much situation going on in this facility, so. Yeah, most of the council have been telling you, they've received emails requesting gift cards on my behalf. But I
I bought them for you.
Oh, I never thought of it. But yeah, there's a lot of people out there who have intent, so we, we're, thank you. Anyone else before we move on? Okay, we'll move on to item number five on our active agenda. Brandon Bell, who is our associate planner, will be leading this discussion regarding an action to consider ignore this. The zone property located approximately twenty-six seventy-one, north four hundred east, and city to community commercial downtown.
Evening, Mayor, and members of the council. John, could you zoom in on the, just the red area, just a little red, not much. So, there's been, this is for an area that's approximately, approximately twenty-six seventy-one, north four hundred east of Washington Boulevard. The acreage that's being proposed to be rezoned is about one point one acres, and it's pretty, pretty simple proposal. I'll go ahead and read the decision-type statement for legislative decisions. When the city is considering a legislative matter, the Planning Commission acts as a recommending body to the City Council. The city has wide discretion in taking legislative action. Examples of legislative actions are general plan zoning map and land use text amendments. Legislative actions require that the Planning Commission give a recommendation to the City Council, and typically the criteria for making a decision related to legislative matter require compatibility with the general plan and existing votes. The, the applicants requesting a zone change for the property located in approximately twenty-six seventy-one, north Washington Boulevard, again from civic, from the civic zone to community commercial downtown. But the applicant has also had a subdivision approved, which has some remaining conditions of approval that I'm working on going through and working with the applicant to finalize. And, and that subdivision was to add the same property that's now being proposed to be rezoned to some existing parcels that they own. There's, there's two parcels to the east of this. It's shown here as one because it's being combined in the subdivision into all into one parcel, but those, those pieces of property are going to be added together once the subdivision is recorded. Recording of the approved subdivision for this property will enable the boundaries of the proposed zoning district to line up with the boundaries of the adjusted parcel. And so the portion in red is the portion that's being proposed to be rezoned. And the proposed rezon ordinance as written currently would make the rezone of the property subject to recording of the approved subdivision. So in other words, it says if you choose to approve the ordinance, the ordinance says once the subdivision is recorded and finalized, then the property, the reason will be in effect. So I'll go ahead and go through the general plan guidelines for this proposed rezone. The first general guideline is that a definite edge should be established between the types of uses to protect the integrity of you, of each use, except where the mixing of uses is recommended in the general plan. Staff comment on this is that the proposed zone change will extend only one, will extend one zone slightly where it borders another zone, but the boundary between the two zones already exists, and this simply proposes a slight change in location of that boundary. No change in use will occur, though, an expansion of existing commercial uses proposed. The next guideline states that zoning should reflect the existing use of the property to the greatest extent possible unless the area is in transition or is in conflict with the general plan. Staff comment on this guideline is that the proposed zone change will facilitate the expansion of existing use, which is addressed a little bit later. And the abandonment of the former Public Works building site along with the approval of a subdivision in the area and the recent road extension are considered as factors. Are considered as factors contributing to a transition in this area. The next guideline states that where possible, uh, properties which face each other across a local street. Should be the same or a similar zone. Uh, collector and arterial roads may be sufficient buffers to warrant different zones. Staff comment on this guideline is that the, uh, potential. The potential, uh, zone change if approved will change the. Zone boundaries such that the zone will be the same on both sides of the street. In the area where the reason of this property is located. So in other words, it will make the, uh, the area consistent with that guideline. Of having the same or similar zone across the street. The, uh, next guideline states that zoning boundaries should not cut across individual lots or developments. Um, in other words, placing the lot in two separate zones. And the illogical boundary should be redrawn to follow property or established geographical lines. Uh, staff comment on this is that the rezone will ensure that the boundaries of the. Community commercial downtown zone follow the property line of the recently approved subdivision for the property. Uh. So that the entirety of the lot will fall within a single zone. In other words, this, uh, this. Uh, proposed rezone would also, um, bring the property into conformity so that they. Uh, with this guideline, so that the, the zone boundaries and the subdivision or the property boundaries, um, line up or run another. Uh, there are a few more guidelines that relate specifically to commercial, uh, properties of which this is, uh, is falls under that category. Uh, versus that generally commercial, uh, zones should be located along Washington Boulevard and twenty-seven hundred north. Streets avoiding local streets which serve residential zones. Access to commercial zones should avoid local streets within residential zones. A staff comment on this is that the proposed zone changes. Uh, redeveloping currently unused property, uh, and will facilitate the expansion of the commercial use. Along Washington Boulevard. The additional access gained will not use a local street within a residential zone. And there are no immediately adjacent residential properties on the west side of Washington along Pleasantview Drive. The next guideline states that, uh, adhere to the general plan recommendations for the downtown and south town. Staff comment is that, on this is that this proposed business expansion does not go. Uh, contrary to the general plan recommendation for this area. And then, um. The next guideline states that if compatible with the general plan. Existing businesses on collectors and arterials should be allowed to expand. While providing an adequate buffer with adjacent residential zones. So staff comment on this guideline is that the, this proposed rezone is. Exactly the situation is contemplated in this guideline, uh, it's a business expansion. Along within our tier, along in our terrestrial within the city. Neither the building and parking expansion nor the rezone. Will immediately impact residential properties in this area. Uh, staff is of the opinion that there is a sufficient buffer from residential prop- properties. And that this is this type of proposed rezone which includes a building and expansion is exactly the situation this guideline was written for. There are residential properties to the west, but they're not immediately adjacent. I think they're a couple hundred feet approximately, um. The next guideline is, uh, encourage commercial uses to be developed with a focus towards walkable streets with buildings. Approaching the sidewalk rather than as a standard strip commercial with parking adjacent to the road. Uh, staff comment on this is that the location of the majority of the buildings already, uh, sets already been built. And the parking lot is behind the building with the building closer to the street. The unbilled portion of the building will also be in front of the parking closer to the street than the parking lot. The, the next guideline is consider development agreements to ensure higher quality development. Um, there's no development agreement that is proposed or case that would be necessary, uh, by staff, uh, for this, uh. Rezone and then the, uh, final guideline is, uh, promote mixed use developments. Uh, staff comment is just that this is an already existing use that of a building and a parking lot expansion. Uh, which an earlier guided guideline stated directly, it should be permitted for existing businesses. Uh, no change of use or additional uses are proposed. The, uh, planning commission. Weighted on this, uh. With a four to zero vote that this crop, they recommending that this property be approved to be rezoned to the community commercial. Downtown zone, uh, staff recommends that the city council consider the general plan reason guidelines which have just. Been reviewed and, uh, make a decision regarding this rezone. And I am happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
Brandon, um. Can we just give a proof of subsidy and it's, it is a couple hundred feet down there? Has anyone talked to the developer there? Who, uh, see if they have any concerns? Cause it's a couple hundred feet and.
Yeah.
You know, it, I'm just wondering if that presses against the, uh. Not being too close to a residential. I know this is something we want to do, I just want to make sure you.
I have not, I have not talked to, to the developer, um, the. The property, I considered the change to be minimal because of the property that's being rezoned is. Allotted for a parking lot and so I didn't. I didn't consider it a sufficient impact, um, but. You know, we, we have to do that if the council decides that they'd like to.
Uh, council member Swanson.
The one point one acres, is that the area that you have marked in red? Or is it the two lots combined, lot one? And plus the red area.
Uh, I believe it's the, the total area combined, uh, the.
The two together, cause I don't, I didn't remember that we had. That we had, uh. Made surplus one point one acres in that area. It was more like point one acres.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's with the lots to the east.
Okay, so what's marked there is lot one plus the red area. In total, those two combined is the one point one acres.
Yes.
So is the current. Zone of the bigger crease, what the building is currently, is that, um. Um, zoned?
That's currently community commercial downtown, so.
So it's just adding to it, just like.
Yes.
Any other questions? Do I hear from the applicant or does the applicant want to? Say anything, I don't see.
No one can do it better than Brandon.
All right, John, do we have the ordinance, uh, for us? We'll make sure that that.
In, in our packet. It says that the project area is approximately one point one acres. If the main piece of the property, is that correct? If the main piece of the property is already in the, uh, community center, community center downtown area. Because that red area is not one point one acres.
That, so what you said is correct, the entire project is. The majority of it is already in the, the current zoning that's being asked for, it's just the red area that's being added. To create the total project area.
Got it, okay. Okay, gotcha.
Councilmember Barker. Maybe this will help, I'm, if I understood this right, Brandon, right now it's two parcels. The lot one is two parcels and we're moving a lot line, making it just one big parcel.
That's correct, you, it'll actually be combining two lots and one parcel, so three different properties. The large square is currently two pieces of property and then there'll be the third, that's the part in, that'll all become one.
Thank you. And we have an ordinance. There, this is the ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three. And could you point out the, uh, condition? Uh, that Brandon mentioned, cause I've been there. The zoning is conditional, if I heard you right.
Yes, I can point out it's under section two. This is, so this, it'll take effect upon the recording of the mountain medical center subdivision. And there were very slight changes to the wording from the. Last version of the president, the city council, planning commission. Nothing substantive.
It counsels your questions on the ordinance system for us. I thought I'd be looking for a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three. Which is a request to rezone property located approximately twenty-six seventy-one north. Four hundred east. From civic to community commercial downtown. You have a motion?
Mayor, I motion that we. Uh, approve this consideration, uh, and ordinance to rezone property located at approximately twenty-six seventy-one north. Four hundred east from civic to community commercial downtown. Uh, noting in section two that. The ordinance shall, shall take effect upon the recording of the mountain medical center subdivision.
And that's ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three, council member. Dow pass, is that correct?
That's correct, if I did not say it. Twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three, that's it.
All right, thank you. Do we have a second to council member Dow pass's motion? I say it, second by council member Severing, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a voice, uh, we'll call board on this. Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Dow pass?
Yes.
Councilmember Swanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Severing?
Yes.
Motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three passing unanimously. Now we'll move on to item number six. I'm assuming Kai, I don't see Kai here, who's going to be presenting?
Kai is online.
Oh, Kai is online. Okay, Kai, if you'd like to lead us in the discussion, you can start an ordinance and any net, uh. Accessory building standards and, uh, zones R two, R three, R four and R D.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and council, uh. Um, as you'll remember, uh, a couple of months ago, uh, we had an applicant come in with an application for an accessory building in an R two zone. And that was when staff discovered that the accessory building standards in the R two, R three. R four and the P U R D zones weren't consistent with the standards for the R one ten and R one eight zones. So we've, we've amended the code to bring those into, uh. Kind of their. Now, I lost my train of thought, but anyways, uh, they're, they're consistent across all the zones. So, John, can you bring up the ordinance, please? The ordinance is about ten pages of text, so I'll get into that, kinda illustrating what we've done to kind of make those standards consistent. So this first section here is for the R. R two zone. We've added the standards down at the bottom and eliminated the standards that were inconsistent with the R one ten and R one eight zones. Um, essentially, these are exactly the same and they're kind of designed to take the impact from the. Accessory building and main, keep it on the lot that the accessory building is built upon by. The height increased with an increased setback, eliminating the visual impact on the adjoining lots. Um, one thing that I did notice as I was looking through this. Uh, in our code, we did come across a section of standards for the R three, R two, R three, R four and P R D zones. That limited those buildings to a maximum size of five hundred ninety-nine square feet. And I've included them in, in the R two, R three and R four zones, except on the ordinance that's before you. I neglected to attach it into the R two zone, so I will need to add that. Later, but if you scroll down, it is added into. The, at the bottom of the table, the site development standards, so in the R two, R three and R four and the P R D zones accessory buildings will be limited, limited. To that five hundred ninety-nine square feet. Um, additionally, we added accessory buildings as a permitted use in these zones. It, the, it was not listed as a permitted use. So we've added them as a permitted use as well as reference the, the standards for those buildings in the P R I D, P U R D zones. So down in nine M nine is the, the table that was. Essentially had this accessory building standards for these zones. We've essentially taken those out of here with the exception of the P R I D zones. Which essentially, these are R one eight zones in many respects with regard to their site development standards. Um, and as well as the five hundred ninety-nine square feet, the. Minimum or maximum size, so Susan and I are, have not had a chance to correct some numbering issues as well as. The adding of the five hundred ninety-nine square feet into the R two zone. Those are some changes that will need to happen to the ordinance before it's, uh. Codified, I would ask, the only thing that we have the, the leeway to make those two changes. Or any grammatical changes as needed. Um, do you have any questions for me?
Yeah, Kai, I, I do have one question just to clarify. The limit of five hundred ninety-nine square feet. Seems to be unique to these zones. In the other zones, it seems like we have the twenty-five percent limitation with proper setbacks. So why is, uh, is it so unique here? Limited to five hundred ninety-nine square feet?
Uh, this was existing in the code. I can guess that given the, the smaller lot sizes was the reasoning and kind of the. Proximity to places, uh, the zones that have smaller lot sizes as well.
Isn't that covered by the limitation of the maximum twenty-five percent of lot cut reach?
That would be a factor as well, yes, that, that could limit them, um. Before that or even after that five hundred ninety-eight square foot threshold.
It seems like our discussion was wanting to try to standardize this. Across the city. To be limiting these zones. In a little bit different way than our, our others.
Hmm, and if the, this, this did not go to the count, uh, planning commission for a recommendation. It was just existing in our code, so if that's something that you would like to, to take back to the planning commission to get a recommendation on. Uh, we'd be happy to do so.
Well, let me get some input from the council. Council, what's your thoughts? And John, have you had a chance to read through this ordinance?
Yes.
I cleaned it up the numbering too, so I'm gonna sit with the numbering.
The only issue though is the P R U D. Catching it into the same, although a lot of times P R U Ds have. Different rules that sometimes prohibit outbuildings, for example.
So, any input, council on standardization? Are you okay with the five hundred ninety-nine square feet result? Councilmember Swanson?
I, I find it hard to form an opinion without some examples of what that would do.
So would you like to table this till we get further information?
I would.
Would you like to make a motion about that? Postpone, excuse me, postpone.
Mayor, I move that we postpone this item to a future date, uh, for two things. One, I personally, I'd like to hear finding commissions. Take on it and get their recommendation and have them, uh, look into the twenty-five percent. And the five hundred ninety-nine square foot maximum. And, uh, see if it's necessary to have both. If the twenty-five percent is sufficient. To limit the sizes appropriately, then I think we could stick with just that. That's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion, councilmember Swanson, do we have a second? A second back. His motion is to postpone this to a future meeting. And feature this in a discussion on this item. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes, this will be tabled to a future meeting. Kai, if you, uh. Follow up on that and get the information as requested by councilmember Swanson, and appreciate it.
Will do, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for your efforts on this, uh, we'll now hear from Scott Hess. He will lead us in discussion. Uh, regarding a request to consider an encroachment. Property located approximately thirty-six seventy-eight north, six seventies.
Thank you, Mayor and council. To remember, um. The Keyes family had an opportunity to come in front of the council to discuss a shed that was. Uh, found to be located on property owned by North Ogden City. They since made a request to come back and present more information or, or address you in person. And which was a comment by councilmember Severing or put back on the agenda, I believe, so. Um, in term, kind of refresh your memory on the shed, it's a lifetime. Kind of prefabricated shed that's sitting on. What originally was understood to be an easement, but is actually a parcel owned by North Ogden City. That it is the access road back to a detention basin, so the parcel runs from. curb and gutter back a sidewalk, sending back into this detention basin. On the south side of the Keyes family, uh, property, so. Staff went out on Monday morning, this isn't their staff, uh, report, but we had. Representative John was there, the building department's there and the Keyes family. To attempt to locate the property line as best as they can based on the property pins that are there. And it was confirmed on site that the shed is on North Ogden City property, I don't have the exact. Amount that that was, but it's, um, feet rather than inches. And so we'll have the property owners' request here on what they'd like to do there, so. Parcel owned by the city, the council can weigh in on, on whether or not it's permitted to stay, whether you want to sell it, whether you want to. Uh, provide an easement for that or some other sort of, you know, request to occupy essentially. And should it be shown that the shed shouldn't stay on North Ogden property, at minimum it would need to meet the setbacks required by the zone. Which for a shed this size would be three feet back from the property line and then behind the front plane of the house or out of a thirty. I, foot front yard setback. And there is now. And there is now an approved site plan through land use permit that's been approved for relocation of this shed into an acceptable location, uh, if that needs to happen. So a couple of different directions the council can go there.
So Scott, are you telling me even if the council decided to sell that piece of property or lease it or whatever, the shed would still have to be moved?
Yeah, there's a few things that the city can do. So you could, say you decided to sell the property, uh, the staff's recommendation and looking at something along these lines would be to split the width of that easement and separate it down, straight down the middle and sell it to both or give it up, you know, offer it to both property owners for purchase so that you'd have fifty percent of what was formerly North Ogden City owned property that'd be impacted by easements. You'd still have a perpetual access easement, but then property owner on the south, property owner on the north would gain some amount of property. You could also elect to sell the entire parcel, but I think you, you probably want to make that available to both property owners because you're, you're kind of benefiting one over the other in that case. Uh, there's, we have detention accesses and drainage accesses that run solely on easements. We have drainage slails that run solely on easements, so it's not a necessary parcel to own as a parcel, but cities are also kind of inherently patient landowners and we already have it. And so deciding whether or not we want to go through subdivision process and resell is a question.
But even if we sold it, or at least, I'm hearing you right, shed still has to be moved.
Unless, yeah, you'd have to do a subdivision. So they have to do a subdivision like what, um, Val Paul has done now where you change property lines. If you were to change the property lines or it runs down the center of the asphalt, the shed would in effect have the setback built in at that point. But if they were to own it as their own parcel, you know, you sell them a sliver of ground, they would have to do a subdivision amendment. And the cost of those subdivision amendments are borne by the applicant asking to purchase that property in most cases.
So the only solution to not move the shed, just trying to clarify here, would be to sell that parcel by splitting the road, selling half to the Keyes family and half. I, I understand that would solve the problem that that, or landowners had for some period of time in expanding his garage. But if that's being the case, if the description was in the middle, you're saying we wouldn't have to move the shed.
Correct.
But what the city would need then is an easement to access the the basin, the basin.
Correct, yep.
Okay, so the, if, the, uh, request we have tonight is to, uh, grant an encroachment request. Let me turn to council member Bark, well, it's not council, council member Extron's not here. Council member Barker, I think, was over that department. Uh, would you like to speak to us about encroachments? Uh, or the council, uh, weighed in on that?
I'll, I'll refer to our planning commissioner about it.
Planning director?
Planning director, yes. As far as what they are, what they represent?
No, I mean, do we want to be into the encroachment, uh, business or in essence granting variances?
Well, it's different than a variance. It's, it's a opportunity, you know, it's an option to occupy property owned by North Ogden. That can be looked at a bunch of different ways. So say the city owned a piece of property that had a parking lot on it, you might grant an encroachment or an occupancy permit for a food truck license or, or some other vendor or something. So you can look at your property ownership a number of different ways and, and utilize it differently. So the variance in this case would be whether or not you permit a structure, any structure to be uh, permitted across a property line. That's just, it's, it's bad practice. We used to do it decades ago. This happened, you know, people would have two parcels and they build their house across and it was no big deal because, well, that person's always in perpetuity going to own both parcels. And we know nothing lasts forever like that. So we typically don't like anything to be constructed over a property line. So if your, if your council wants to permit it in the place, if staff's recommendation would be figure out who, whose responsibility it is to have it, surveys of land ownership documents drawn up, the subdivision redrawn up, and then fix that property line issue.
So I heard you say it's bad practice to grant this.
Is that correct? Bad practice to permit a structure across a property line.
Okay.
Whether you want to permit this.
Uh, let me, uh, pull the council here, um. I have my preference, but let's, let's hear from council member Dowpass.
The original discussion, we didn't talk much about selling the property. I didn't know how much of an option it is. But it sounds like no matter what, it's going to be pretty cost prohibitive, I think, to, to figure out. And so I haven't been in support of this. I, I'd rather just leave it how it is and we've kind of made a decision on it, in my opinion.
Council member Swanson?
What do you mean by leave it as it is?
Don't take action and don't allow it to be on North Ogden property.
Okay, so the property owner, owner would then have to move the shed?
Yes.
Okay. I, I'm of the same opinion that, uh, I don't have a problem with spil-, uh, splitting the property down the middle and maintaining that easement. Uh, if the two property owners want to do that, uh, in my visit with the Keyes family uh, and understanding what the other homeowner has dealt with or been wanting to do for a decade or more, uh, it sounds like it could be a win-win situation for the two of them. Um, but aside from that, I'm, I'm not in favor of an encroachment of any type.
Okay. Thank you, and, uh, council member Severing.
Well, I, I'm, I'm in agreement with what, uh, councilman Swanson said. I mean, if we can benefit to homeowners, I'm okay with, uh, splitting it and making that difference one way or another from a real estate perspective. You can't sell property where there's an encroachment. So it has to be disclosed down, uh, down the road somewhere that there's, uh, there's an encroachment, so. But I'm in favor of, uh, dividing and making it available to, to two citizens if it'll be, if they're fit to them.
So, uh, with an easement, if we, it's all on my ground easement, that just had to be disclosed on the platform. Seems like it would solve two problems. Council member Barker, do you have something to add?
I think that's, long-term, that's probably the best is to grant an option to purchase both property owners.
Okay, so if I'm hearing correctly, there's not an interest in granting, uh, uh, an encroachment request for the property this evening. Uh, but we are willing to entertain, uh, the potential sale of that property uh, to solve problem for two residents while having an easement, which I think has some benefit to the city because frankly, we're getting more and more of these and they're harder to maintain, the weeds and so if the homeowners were to, uh, you know, agree to maintain that as part of the easement, I think that's something that should be, could be considered. So, um, on our agenda tonight, there's a request to do that.
Right.
Council member Barker?
So, um, I know we offered the previous owner, not, or with the, uh, payment of the credit statement, no, um, earlier tonight, offered Mr. Paul enough to this big, can we listen to this property owner?
I just looked in the center here.
Oh, there they are. I was looking over here. Since they came in, I'm good. I don't have any problem with that.
Child Keys, North Ogden resident, um, I think we said, right, you missed the last meeting. But I think we said what we, we've, we've come to say, and so we're just looking for a decision here. And we're, we're happy to explore the possibility of purchasing this land.
Thank you. Any other questions? So it's been a request that we have a motion for this, I guess, uh, until you die of the lack of emotion, which appears to be the case. So item seven appears to, uh, die for lack of emotion. And we're certainly happy to pursue, yeah, the option. Okay, thank you. We'll now move on to item number eight. Scott Hess, our planning director, will lead a discussion uh, to, uh, consider approval of North Ogden City modern income housing plan, which I believe is due to the state by October first. Quite a discussion on this, uh, and we called me last night with, uh, what's going on and, uh, you know, I think this will be really, because I don't think people understand the number of entitlements that are that have been given to build apartments and townhouses and, uh, new building over here. So hopefully that will give the information, uh, to the state to know that we're not just sitting on the pounds. Try to comply so we don't get you'd like to take a few minutes, Scott, go over the pertinent points?
Hmm, so this is, uh, one of those general plan amendments that I don't think was supposed to be annual. But now, you know, given the, the housing shortage and what we've seen it ramp up in housing really since twenty nineteen and what has happened, this has become a recurring thing from the state to be kind of guiding this bar or changing the, the, the regulations for the cities to comply with on modern income housing. And eventually maybe we'll get a plan that is in place and then we have enough time to let it sit out there and see if any of our, our changes are actually having an effect. But right now it feels like we're just kind of updating the plan. So beginning in twenty nineteen, you had Senate Bill thirty-four, which established a menu item of required, uh, regulations in the state that cities can choose from. If you remember, it's a kind of a carrot and a stick approach. Uh, the carrot being that we get to do planning and the stick being if you don't do that planning, then you don't get any state transportation funds. So, uh, seeing how we built Washington Boulevard, let's say, transportation funds, and that's a really good project for mobility in our city. Is a big deal for us. So, um, House Bill four sixty-two this last year updated and amended those, uh, those menu items themselves. So the big task in front of us today is less on the beginning of the plan where it's, it's data heavy. That data is delivered by the state of Utah to us by Department of Workforce Services. Uh, that has not been updated yet and really to focus on the menu items with the intention of selecting at least three in our community. We don't have any fixed guideway transit. That would be, uh, front runner train, light rail, or bus traffic transit. We have our, our two bus lines. So by state regulation, we have to choose three of the twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two menu items. Uh, but if we select five of them, then we are in a priority position for those state transportation funds, which I, I haven't seen the scoring criteria. I don't know exactly what that means. But if we can make them work for our community and we think they're actionable items, I think that it's worth looking for five of these.
So Scott, my understanding is they haven't really cut anybody off, but they're trying to do is say, if you want priority, get the funds, then you'll comply. So they're kind of using a reverse strategy there. And I, I think it's important for the public to know in the group here that, you know, zoning is becoming a big issue with the state. And, uh, there is a movement right now to take zoning away from the cities and put that in the control of state. Because they do feel like cities aren't complying and are willing to have high density housing. In this presentation last night, the projection, I can't remember what year it was, I told John I'd like to bring that information, make a presentation to the council. But they're anticipating that Weaver County will grow by a hundred and thirty-four thousand residents during this period of time with shrinking balance size. And so it's not like you say we got four or five per household. And so they're, they're saying the demand for housing will even be greater, you know, moving forward. Yeah, so, uh, it's, but the state is, is, uh, there's a movement down there that takes zoning into their, their control. If we don't do it ourselves.
And that seems to be a nationwide trend. We're seeing kind of the degradation of local land use control around zoning. And there's multiple communities and states that are grappling with that, you know, what to do to help answer these types of questions. Um, John, if you want to go down to the actual modern income housing plan and to, you know, start with letter A, a little bit lower, further down, um, beginning with the menu items, give you an idea of what the red lines look like on the menu items themselves going down. Right here. So last year, the menu item starting in twenty nineteen, Senate Bill thirty-four said, rezone for densities necessary to assure the production of modern income housing. A lot of what happened here between Property Rights Coalition, the builders, and the Land Use Task Force, which is Utah League of Cities and Towns, representatives of local government, was attempting to wordsmith some of this to make it actionable, but also realistic for cities. So the new word is, uh, rezone for density, densities necessary to facilitate the production of modern income housing. Uh, unless you're Park City or maybe Springdale building a little bit of workforce housing, we as the city, we don't build housing. We don't really build our city. You're responsible to developers to do that. So you put a general plan, plan in place, you put zoning in place, and then you wait for the market to come and respond to this. Uh, so we're attempting to facilitate modern income housing. We've updated the language in here of what that means for us, and then the state is required this year to consider implementation measures with timeframes. And that's all the guidance I've gotten from two, you know, local state planning conferences, uh, discussions, Department of Workforce Services saying, what does an implementation plan look like for this? So for us, it's pretty simple. It's the next little, um, Excel text box, John, if you want to, send down just a little. So in this case, the implementation measure for rezoning for densities necessary to facilitate production of modern housing. And I grabbed a few items that we've done to kind of capture success and show that we're working towards this and then also think forward. So, uh, the general plan, future land use map adoption, we did it. So that's, I think we should, you know, celebrate that when we have that, um, in place. The general plan, written text and document update, we are working on, uh, with the thought of maybe that's going to take us twelve months or so to get through. I think it was eighteen months to get through the, the map itself. And then from staff's perspective, it's market-driven rezone requests. So we'll evaluate over time the developer's response to increased density areas to provide new modern income housing options. And in the text above, I, I write that our new general plan, future land use map increased the size of areas that were um, accessible to these higher density zones. So in effect, the city has lowered the bar for added area of the city that will be eligible for multi-family. But we're not building, we don't have the money, the funds available to be foot forward in providing housing to the community. So at this point, we wait for the markets, you know, the market demand to come in and ask for annexations, rezones, and development of those multi-family units. And then it's up to us as the council, or as the city and, and you all, as the council and those legislative decisions to hopefully guide the city in the right direction based on those requests that will meet and match the general plan.
So Scott, my repetitive question.
Yeah.
So this is based upon rezoning for affordable housing. It's rezoning for densities that will facilitate the production of affordable housing, affordable housing. So most of these apartments that have been built in the city that are rented for two thousand dollars a month, right? So, uh, when we resolve something, uh, who determines if it's for affordable housing or what that is?
Well, we had a, we had a number of, um, sessions on this just last week at the EPA conference, the Titan K conference, and listened to what some of the other cities are doing. And we've talked in this room and with the public about when we increase density, we want to collect open space. And there are some, some cities that are collecting a similar exaction, but it's saying, we'll rezone you for higher density, but we want you to provide ten percent, uh, of your housing stock at seventy or eighty percent of area median income. So you can use the same rezone or legislative process to get out from the, you know, private developers which is modern income housing.
A hidden tax. Because those units that are going to be rented at seventy or eighty percent of market, the developer, to hit their bottom line, is going to have to increase the rent on your units, so.
I mean, you could say the same thing about the open space too, though. I mean, the, those homeowners who are buying those units in those areas are paying for that.
Open space, it's next.
Correct.
So in this case, it's more direct because it's ten dollars than that deposit.
Yep. Or it encourages property developers to bring forward low-income housing tax credits, light tech credits or some other way to do it. But it, it forces a market response instead of the city essentially driving it. So you tell the developer, how are you, out of your bottom line, going to produce affordable housing? And we haven't done that. I don't, you know, the state isn't asking us to do that yet, but I think that it's a market response. Short of the cities carting out general fund monies to pay the mortgage different. Carting out general fund monies to pay the mortgage differential for somebody, I don't know how we really produce moderate income housing.
I think I saw the units uh became about what fifty five million dollars available. Allocated to certain projects, you get that money, they have to. Sure, certain units at low market rates. So the government is stepping in. The tax dollars from the citizens.
And I I think the thought here in in North Ogden has provided, in my opinion, a fair share of multi-family units.
I I think it's important that we understand when housing was necessary. A lot of the growth in our city is from our kids.
Well, let me run through the other, these other items, because I want. The council to weigh in on, I hope you looked at the full menu items that was attached on exhibit and. And whether or not these are the right ones, but um the next would be. Item E, create or allow for and reduce regulations related to internal or detached accessory dwelling units in residential zones. Uh these are now permitted in all residential zones, the the one thing that we could do is. Uh consider whether or not twenty thousand square feet for a detached of of land area for detached accessory. Too restrictive in our city, we're we're having fewer and fewer numbers of those larger lots in the city, some of those are legacy properties. Uh the average lot size in the city is probably closer to like ten, ten and a half to eleven thousand square feet. As the biggest swath of our city is that R one ten area that swings through the center of the city. So considering whether or not we want to open up the regulations and allow eighty U, detached eighty U's in other areas of the city. Uh and then this is another one of those response type of implementation elements where we can promote to the public. That your eighty U's that you might have had, your your prior illegal basement apartments you've been renting for years and years are now legal. It can become legal really easily through just a a firelight safety inspection, fire marshal. Uh and you can rent those out legally with a, you know, nominal fee and a business license. And attempt to kind of legalize or normalize those, and then continue to process new building permits for eighty U's. Of which we see five to ten a year um. Attached accessory dwelling units outside of like a. A canon kitchen in the basement of a a new home, but proper. You know, full on basement apartments with separate entrances, they're fairly rare, they're they're expensive, and we don't see a whole lot of them in the city. Okay, um the next is amend land use regulations to allow for higher density or new modern income residential development. In commercial or mixed use zones near major transit investment corridors. Uh we we did this, the general plan now includes that whole southwest quadrant of the city that's to be annexed in in the future, that's. You know, annexation declaration is essentially all eligible for some form of multi-family, and it's all right within. Very close proximity to the major trans- uh transportation corridor, Washington Boulevard, which also includes our. Most high frequency bus line, uh bus service in the city, so I felt like that one. Met what we were already doing and is easy, relatively easy to implement. Uh the next is implement zoning incentives for modern income units in new developments, so this is an exploration of. How to incentivize low to moderate income housing units through some sort of uh. Trade off process, so you have increased densities that will permit, but on the other end, private market provides for. Some form of low and low per modern income housing, that may or may not. Result, and we'll see, but I think it was worth giving it a shot, or at least exploring that language. And then uh L, reduce waiver eliminate impact fees related to modern income housing, uh this is one that again we can look at, and. We don't have a of a full building permit, we we have very limited dollars of that permit, which average. Fourteen to seventeen thousand dollars probably for North Ogden, at least for a single family home, what those those. Impact fees are and full building permit cost. We have a little sliver of that money that's that we can play with, but otherwise the impact fees are relatively set, they're set. Essentially on a truth and taxation of what the services cost for those, um so we could reduce. A portion of those fees potentially, but it like it's not going to drive. Modern income housing, you know, it it might be a a minor offset. Or it might be an encouragement to a developer to do ten percent or fifteen percent of a whole neighborhood project is this, if they can. Are all are the developer and the home builder at the same time, but. Again, we're kind of playing on the edges, and I think that a lot of these uh menu items really are are sort of playing on the edges of what the city can do. To provide moderate income housing, because unless you're Park City that's building and subsidizing homes for workforce development. Or workforce housing, we have a pretty limited toolbox on what we can do to affect change in housing prices. So those are the five that that staff has proposed, work for North Ogden at this time, of that full menu item eligible in in the House Bill. And our recommendation is to uh forward this to to D W S as our complete plan and implementation steps. And let them respond and whether or not this meets their. Uh their request for an implementation plan, and then I'd imagine this is something that will continue to create an impact and improve over the next several years.
And John, it uh seems like when the village of prominence point was approved. Part of the discussion was that that meant the city's obligation for. Affordable housing for some period of time, is that the case, or is because of all the changes in. Rules and regulations, that that doesn't help the same.
So it helps us contribute better based on this report from three years ago that we were. We were offering more housing types at better values, I think the original rents were supposed to be around fourteen hundred dollars. And so what what you're finding is there's two things happening, like Scott mentioned, the rents are going up, but also the income is going up, although rents are going up. Faster than income. But the state did highlight the village of prominence point as one of the projects that cities had approved to kind of. You know, I mean, that at that point, at six hundred units, it was almost ten percent of the existing housing stock was now. More affordable, although. Were ten. Uh approved in the townhomes.
Yeah, it seemed like it was quite a few, uh two hundred minus twenty seven cottage lots.
Oh, Patriot Point.
Oh, Patriot Point, I'm sorry. Hundred and fifty six, and I think Cooperstown is a hundred and sixty. Yeah, I think uh the submission of this plan requires us to tell them what. Oh, right.
Yeah, we have the the numbers at the top of the plan do talk about what our current numbers are, so we have uh. Five hundred and fifty eight apartments across two different projects, three hundred and sixty five townhomes, sixty eight independent living units, which need this one to be updated. Those will be rolled into the apartments. Uh and we expected by twenty twenty five, seven thousand two hundred and fifty residential units. With approximately nineteen hundred and forty of those being connected units, so about twenty six percent of our city is some form of connected unit, which is. Just by cost right now compared to a single family home, less expensive than the rest of our housing stock in the most part.
There's all the reports that you see come through the county and state show about two percent. Cause it's county wide.
Right.
Yeah, but you have some cities that have none.
Sure. And we have a lot of headroom to grow too, with all those other areas where we'll see. I think we continue to expect over the next five years, the share of new units coming into the city will probably be leaning heavier on those. Connected units, some sort of townhome, multi-family units as opposed to your single family.
And the reason I ask the question is sometimes that comes up when somebody comes in and creates these density units, you know, you have to make sure. It would seem like to me, if we have that many units entitled, as Councilman Swanson said many times. You know, we don't want to get more inventory than we have demand, because you know what happens then. So I just wanted to clarify that we are in fairly decent shape, we surely want to comply and provide housing. Uh for those who are in need, but uh just wanted to make sure we were. Anything else you need our help with, other than these, the items from the menu? Council, if you've had a chance to look at them, and John, I know this is of great interest to you. Uh if you have any recommendations uh other than the three that have been presented by Scott?
No, and I I like especially, you know, the way this is now presented with these goals and these measurable things, I think. Makes it easier for residents to understand and for everybody else to understand. And it is something that we've been trying to focus on, you know, internally staff, we've been talking about other ideas and ways to do things to make things affordable or. Even potentially provide affordability for city employees, police officers, people like that. Um and it's just, it's nice to know that the state recognizes the deficiencies we talked about the first couple of years we did this. And they're starting to come around with the data, or at least recognize a need to work on it in a way that can make it meaningful so that you have the right tools to make your decisions.
Council, you've had a chance to look at it, uh are you in support of what Scott's recommendation, or do you have further? Uh recommendations or questions for Scott? Councilmember Delpass.
I just had a question, so uh at the end, we were talking about. All the approved multi-family homes in the city between Cooperstown, prominence point and Patriot Point. In your opinion, are all the approved multi-housing units. Is it, is it enough in your opinion? Is it too little? Like how? What's the gauge? And I I'm just interested, I I I would like to hope that it's enough. But I just was looking for your opinion.
Yeah, it seems to me that twenty five plus percent of your city, of your total number of dwelling units in some form of. Connected and attached unit feels like enough in a city that doesn't have. Major transit, we're not a major employment center, we're not like a a daytime population growing city, we're we're not a redeveloping city. So to me, that seems really reasonable. You know, we could easily have been one of the outskirts communities of the Ogden, the metro area where. We'd have hit ten percent or something like that over the years, so I I think that we've done very well. Accommodate it and position ourselves in a way that that we'll see future growth and economic development based on the numbers.
Awareness on on the supply versus the demand, you know, in our city and find that. Well seeking, so.
Over the years, it seemed that the state in, as they're driving this, you talked about kind of being on the edges. It it seems like the mentality has been that if we drive density, we'll drive down housing costs. They've succeeded in creating housing that is more affordable than a single family home. But isn't necessarily affordable housing. So I'm just wondering when the state's going to drop that shoe on us.
Well, there's a, there's a big difference on the hill, and they they clarify this, but between housing affordability. The relative ability of somebody to afford it, you know, your two family earning, or turn to person earning income family. Versus housing affordability, which is set by this level of area median income at, you know, eighty, sixty, and thirty percent. A very medium income, they're two very different questions, but one, it's like housing attainability is probably a better word than affordability. Versus affordable housing, because affordable housing is what you think of as tax credit, you know, it's section eight type of housing that is. Designed specifically for a subset of the population that makes less money than the average person, and then the rest of it is like what you said. With the hope is more inventory, more units drives down the cost as a whole, and it just, it allows for multiple like. Market segments of people who can attain housing at different levels.
Seems like it's going to be really hard to catch that sweet spot with a hundred and thirty four thousand residential residents. It's going to be hard to keep up and. Because it is a supply and demand issue, right?
Right.
Not a supply, house prices stay up. Any other questions? Scott, thank you, thank you very much, team's efforts on uh helping us comply here. This is becoming a greater and greater focus of those folks down on the hills, so thank you very much. So. Council, it's been requested that we approve a motion, have a motion to approve the North Ogden City Modern Income Housing Plan. You have that motion?
There's public comment on the agenda item.
Anybody like to comment?
My name is Doug Anderson, apartment city resident. I did not come here tonight to. Talk about this, but since it has come up, I'm glad I came. Because it is a. Big concern to me. And I've heard that it's a concern to other people, and I know, and I can see that it's a concern to you, and you're trying to deal with. All of these. Forces, if you will. And so I'm not criticizing you, but I am concerned. And I brought it up. Met with uh. Went to this luncheon that uh. It was uh put on. Our governor, Governor Cox, talked with him as well as his, I think it's his cousin, John. And uh. Said that the takeaway that I got was that. You can't just pull up the ladder, you know, and say nobody else can move in. But what we do needs to be done in an intelligent, planned way. Which it sounds like Mr. Hess and company are trying to do. And uh I become concerned when I see huge blocks. Apartments going in side by side along, I work at North River Government in Clearfield and then drive down Main Street. Now, every week, there there's a new one going in and. Some on Washington, twelfth street in that area. Yeah, with hundreds, hundreds of dwellings per block, I just, where are these people going to park? Where are they gonna drive on what roads, what water they're gonna, what are they going to drink? You know, I just. It it looks to me. Like. I hope nobody takes offense to this, but it looks like a a future slum, because I think people. Probably really don't, most people probably really don't want to live in a place like that where they're isolated in a little box, you know. And and don't have a place to go and play without, you know, going down three or four flights of stairs. Where their kids can go, or maybe they don't have kids. And and so. I I mentioned this. To the governor and and he said, let's look at. A place that has done it very intelligently, and he mentioned specifically. What's the name of the place? Down South Salt Lake, Seratoga Springs, close. Maybe it's Point Eagle Mountain, something like that, anyway, he said they've done a very intelligent. Arranging of the housing, different kinds of spaces, and that we might look at. That area, give me some time, as soon as I sit down, I'll think of the name of it. Daybreak, that's what it was, yes. Thank you. As an example, a way to handle this in an intelligent way where. Where we don't just put up huge blocks of housing and, you know, and say, well, we checked that box, now we can get the transportation money. So I I I stood up to offer that as a um. Maybe maybe some way of dealing with this in an intelligent way that you can sustain and. The infrastructure I've supported, water to drink, you know, all that stuff, so thank you, thank you for allowing us some.
John, you have anyone online, like comments?
Not this time.
Anyone else here that would like to comment on this plan? Okay, now we'll then seek a motion. We have a motion to approve the Modern Income Housing Plan as presented by Mr. Hess.
So moved.
So presented by Councilmember Swanson, to the end second, my second. Is there any further questions or discussion? Okay, all was in favor of the motion, please say aye. Thank you very much, motion passes unanimously. And now we move on to item number nine. Which is discussion on North Ogden City properties, John, you can read that.
So Scott asked me.
Thank you, Mayor Council, so in. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So in response to, we have McKee's request, we have another property owner. Willis family's request. And that one, there was a, a fence and some landscaping, some other improvements that are on. Property owned by the city of North Austin. Council asks staff to go back and look at property ownership across the city. And make some recommendations on looking at the potentially surplus property or. Had a lot of help here with other staff members. Casey Hunzaker put a lot of time and effort into a GIS map that we're still developing. Went out on Weaver County's GIS data. We have just shy of three hundred acres and over two hundred and fifty parcels. Individual parcels that the city owns across a few just kind of general chunks of land that you can think of. So. Street right of way is one, we've got drainage, swales and ditches, detention basins, parks, city facilities. And then there's like this kind of other land, like property that we've acquired through road right of way widening that we might. Reconfigure and resell. I think next door, Nelson's Frozen Cuzard parcel was an example of something like that. As an example for the city, just to show you sort of some of the property ownership that we have and the, the different types. We zoomed into one small area of the city. So this is kind of the southeast quadrant of the community. City Hall is just off this map. You have Barker Park here, Dog Park, Orton Park. And this is the, this is an entry from one to have the. Greenways facility, land that is under a some form conservation easement, essentially that's granted to the city. But a parcel to the south that while it's all kind of owned and collectively could potentially be looked at as surplus property. It's not under conservation easement. It's not anything that the previous Parks and Recreation Director wanted to see a park on. On this area, the city is, is pretty well parked. We have other areas in the city that are kind of underparked from an open space standpoint. So. And then in blue, you have other different types of facilities, orange is detention basins that we have. And then there's some little teeny tiny slivers of property. This one's a larger, you can see this is Monroe Boulevard. That we own the right of way to, but there's other little itty bitty pieces and you can't quite see them highlighted on this map. When you zoom in, you realize that just all over the city, we own these little slivers, you know, five feet wide by two hundred feet long that we picked up. As part of a road project. So making a recommendation to the council on all of this property went from, yeah, we could probably riddle that down. To a really large task in the last ten days that we've been going through kind of parcel by parcel. So we'll bring back a more. A more specific list, but I think that what you'll end up with is recommendations on those larger pieces of property. I can think of three, one next door, this one here next to the riding arena. And then the piece on Washington Boulevard up as the road curves. Then we picked up the White House on the corner of Alberta. Toward the house down. Those are, are examples of property that staff would say, these are likely easy to surplus. We don't see a, a public. Prevailing public need or interest in those. And otherwise, when we polled. A city manager attorney, who's also a building official, and spoke to building department, we had public works director. Engineer, myself and, and Casey Hunzaker there, who does a number of things for subdivisions. The, the general recommendation from staff was to start from a position of, we should keep this property, but. It, it's always in our best interest to own property. Some of this property we picked up for pennies on the dollar versus what it would be sold for today. And you just never know when you might need that five feet long roadway for. A public utility easement providing a sidewalk or maybe much even hands of trail connection. So, so beginning from that point to. You know, why would we sell this property? And then discuss them each individually as they, as they come up.
So Scott, did you find a place for pickleball courts?
Thought that was gonna be a cross project. That's what, yeah, that's what we understood.
Sounds like there's some work to do.
Work to do. There, yeah, there, there is definitely some work to do. We talked a little bit about the Clint Willis piece in particular. There are some reservations about selling property that's immediately surrounding any pension basin. You've got access issues. There's always a potential for failure, you know, you never want to say that, but you just don't want more stuff crammed more closely around. These detention basin facilities than you have to have. So I think there's some reservations from staff on that particular property for sale. But that's again up to the legislative body to consider what the best direction there is for the city. And then I think that tonight's discussion highlighted the kind of intersection between the ability to maintain. This three hundred acres, and this isn't even just park space. And when we do the full presentation, we'll break it out and we'll tell you what is. Road right of way that some neighboring property owners are maintaining because it's kind of next to their property and behind the sidewalk. The parks that we actively maintain, the detention basins, we attempt to mow once a month and, and probably don't hit every single one of those parcels. On the revolving doors. So some pieces that might be worth going through and. Kind of splitting the difference between multiple property owners settling and having an easement just so that you can. Off, offload some of the maintenance burden that we have. But I think that's all gonna be part of the conversation.
Thank you. Once again, it'll be a work on. Any questions, counsel? Scott, while he's in. All right, Mr. Hess, thank you for doing it. All right, we'll move on to item number ten. I think it's first start with council member Severn, see if he has things of interest to the public in the council regarding the police department. And then in council member actions, absent, absence, Mr. Call will report on the public works department.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. Chief Quinn, he emailed me today some. Things he wanted me to break, bring up in council today. He reminds us that it'll take us between twelve to fifteen months to be able to complete the public safety building. They're currently taking applications for a full-time community service officer. They handle the animal services enforcement of city ordinances if you're interested.
That's replacement of the division.
Okay, replacement. Oh, that's okay. You're just telling me that. Okay. I just wanted to, you know, the council to know that. Well, I thought that was, but I thought, you know, I guess something that, that someone's leaving, so it's a replacement. Okay, thank you, Mayor. School is back in session. Please watch for little ones. Remember when pedestrians are in a crosswalk. Mark does a school crossing. You cannot proceed past the crosswalk until the pedestrians are entirely off the road. And last but not least, if your neighborhood is interested in participating in a neighborhood watch program. The police department would love to come and offer some training if your community would like to be involved in that. And that's all he said.
And I think, you know, we really need to think hard about the neighborhood watch as the city grows and. You've seen that along. Mount Road and up to Longmont Park, there's somebody that's walking right in these garages in the daylight, taking bikes right out of. Their homes. So neighborhood watch and maybe the VIPS program is something we ought to. Look at to, to help our citizens. So, thank you, Councilmember Severn. Mr. Call.
Okay, so I've got four things. Fruitland Drive, the, the waterline services should be tied in by. Thursday, the September twenty seventh, the September. So it should be done next week. The Mountain Road PRV station is being installed. That'll also provide us with an emergency connection between us and Ogden City. So if we don't have water, we can buy from Ogden City. And if they don't have some water, they can buy from us. That'll be good. They did have a minor hiccup this morning when the excavator hit the gas line. That was mismarked. So the, the locating company mismarked it by five feet, which was enough to cause the bucket to hit it. But it's all safe, taking care of the fire department came and. Anyways, that was an eventful morning. Fall cleanup is October third through eight. That was curbside green waste pickup, that, so that bundled for six. Things like that, where we will drive around as well as the green waste pit will be open for dumping free for residents. It will require proof of residency as per usual. And then the last thing on the leaf truck. We'll do, we're changing it this year. We will still be doing it. There is a, a fixed end date. So by, on November twelfth, we will no longer be doing pickups in residents' yards. Because we get behind on our boxes and our gutters. And then the other thing, we will not be doing a phone list where people call in and give their address. We will just be asking people to put the leaves on their curb, behind the curb, the day after their trash is picked up. So the idea is the trash goes out one day, then the next day put your leaves out. And during the month of October and November, the leaf truck will be driving those routes and evacuating leaves as they're available. If they go out too early and blow around, then you'll need to break them back up. Or I guess maybe your neighbors will break them back up depending on how much weather it's blowing. But though, that's the way the program will operate this year. We'll, we'll send that to you in an email just so that you have it and it's easily referenced. That the no phone list will be the hardest thing for the. Those who, who utilize the program heavily, we just can't stay on top of coordinating, get the truck to all those houses in a timely manner.
So John, how will we properly communicate this to the citizens? In addition to, I think probably several council members got the same one about notification when we're turning up streets. So people know that.
So we'll, we'll put an update on the website, especially in the, where leaf, where people typically would go to look for the phone number. To call the leaf service with, give any instructions as well as Facebook and the newsletter or the. City website and then in the, in the magazine, we'll have an update about the leaf truck this year.
It's worth putting something on the utility bills because this is a big deal.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Access to the website or the Facebook page. So. Anything else, Mr. Call?
Not for. Well, I guess we could just include the water update. So the council had asked for information on water use, water conservation. The, when, without further ado, it is here, it's ready. We can summarize this and get it to the council as well, as well as we'll get it posted in all those places we just talked about, though probably not the water bill. But what we're seeing is in the past six months, if we look at May. Compared to May a year ago, we're down about an average of fifteen gallons a day per connection in the city. Which may not seem like a lot, but that fifteen gallon, that fifteen gallons a day equates. Per connection equates to almost a hundred thousand gallon or just over a hundred thousand gallons of water a day. Which is almost three million gallons a month. Which is over thirty-five million gallons a year if you were to annualize that number. So it's a lot of water we're talking about. A lot of that is because of the education with residents on water usage. Just the awareness because of the drought situation. And then one of the big programs, and we'll. We bring in some more information about this is the conservation program or the, the leak detection program we've been employing. We're actively reaching out to people when we see a meter running in a unusual way. And we'll have a list of how many of those we've done, but we think between those things. We're saving a significant amount of water. And because of that savings, we're also saving money on our pumping costs because right now the, the wells. And the springs are flipping a little bit. Usually we get more water from springs than we do from wells. The last little bit, we've got more from wells than we do from springs, which means by reducing it that, call it thirty-five million gallons. That's less that we have to pump out of the ground. So even though we're pumping more out of the ground than we used to, we're, we're not spending as much as we would have. If we were using water like we were eighteen months ago.
So John, that fifteen gallons a day, what percentage would that be? What's the average use of the residents?
The average use of residents is. A hundred and fifty-three gallons per connection. And the other thing is, we haven't gone, we haven't got the detail to pull the commercial out of it. So this is everything together. So Smith. Counts as a connection and so does the mayor's house. And they get all blended together. So it's, it's probably safe to assume that our consumption is probably closer to the. For residents is closer to a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty. But that's, we don't have those exact numbers, but so you can see that now you start talking about the reduction. It's because I would say most of the reduction is on the, has been done by residents. Because businesses like the Car Wash and Smiths are gonna use about the same amount of water they always do.
Now, there is a downside to this. Because our revenues in the water department, which is good or down because of less usage. But our fixed costs stay about the same. So. It'll be interesting to see how that all comes out in regards to maintaining a front balance in the water department. You know, we, we have very few variable costs. Most of the costs are fixed, so it could create a shortfall. We're hoping all, but I know we missed a bunch of revenue this year. So, anything else, Mr. Call?
Uh, no, that's it.
Thank you for your timely and concise report. We'll go on to item number eleven now. Is there any further public comments? And John, if you would watch online. Anyone who'd like to comment or if there's anyone here who would like to make further comment.
Don't need to hog the whole show. But I do have a question. John, this is probably for you. In years past, there has been a. I'll call it a program to pick up. Branches and green waste in the spring, which is important for people who prune their trees. Found out this year that that wasn't happening anymore. So we had to find a way to haul our branches up. Chop them up in little pieces and put it in the trash can, take care of it another way. That was disappointing. Am I seeing straight that you don't pick up branches in the spring anymore?
That's correct. I'm, I'll have to check with Dave on the last time we did that, but we do allow for the green waste. It's open for free during that cleanup.
I know, but the, the disappointment is now I have to find a truck, which I don't know, you know, find friends or. Do something to get them taken up, whereas in years past. We did. And it seemed to me that that would be a, a logical place to spend some. Money to help citizens clean up their prunes that they do in the spring. So we don't need to discuss it now, but I would like to express my. Opinion that we should. Do that.
It seems like it might be more in the spring than.
Yeah. Just some slight dissatisfaction on stopping of, stopping cleaning up the branches in the spring. So if you would consider doing that again, I'd appreciate it.
Because when you go to the hospital, they have a pain thing between one and ten with smiley faces. So could you define slight disappointment in that realm?
I'd say three.
Members of the council, my name is David Shoup. I live in Liberty. I own a business here in North Ogden. This is the third time that I have approached the council, once in May, once in July, and now here in September. Trying to get some resolution on having construction related issues solved. Along my property, which is Coldwater Animal Hospital. I am frustrated with how long it's taken. And. As part of that frustration, I'm limited on my time, so I need to, to talk quickly. I did bring. A couple of samples that I can show you. This is an asphalt chunk that was left in my lawn. And so when I wrote you a letter, hopefully each of you got a copy of that letter or read that letter. As to sharpening lawnmower blades, that's fine. I can pass this around if you'd like. I put it in a bag so I wouldn't sell it here, quoting him. Same thing with the saw. This is the thickness. Of the saw that was placed to replace what was torn up. And I'm supposed to water that and keep it drained in the weeks. They're doing great, but the saw is dead. Now, this is a subcontractor of granite, arrow construction or arrow landscaping that has done. A poor job. a poor job. Um, in my letter, I had asked several questions. I actually expected a prompt response. And to date, I have not. And so I'd like to reiterate those questions in my name, if time allows.
Yeah, I believe we mailed a response certified mail back to you about a week ago. I haven't seen that. My response was written by a council member and uh, it was sent.
I'll I'll look forward to that.
It it should be out there.
Long story short, the the property that we purchased from North Augden City has been used by Granite Construction Company as a cement cleanup spot. And for weeks, Granite Construction Company has had a tractor parked on our property. I've tried to be considerate in allowing them to leave that area because North Augden City was considerate and allowed my employees to park on that same parcel before we owned it. But now that they're using it as a cement cleanup, my attitude has changed. The tractor has been moved, thankfully. Um, but there's still this problem of the mess that's been left behind. And I I struggle with cleaning up other people's messes, especially if it's not compensated. And hopefully you can can feel my concern. And so really, I'd like to be your friend, but friendship tends to end when accountability starts to play a role. And I'm holding North Augden City accountable to the contract. And maybe there's amendments to this contract that I'm not aware of, but under Article Four Contract Times, subsection four point oh two, I can read it real quick. The work will be substantially completed on or before October twenty-second, twenty twenty-one and completed and ready for final payment. And according to paragraph fifteen point oh six, the general condition is on or before thirty days following the date of substantial completion. So was the project substantially completed on or before October twenty-second, twenty twenty-one? Do we know?
I believe it was because the roadway was open. I guess it's a definition substantial. But I know that the the roadway was used by traffic.
I would agree.
May not have been perfect. I would say substantially complete.
So according to this, it's underlying thirty days following the date of substantial completion. Here it is nearly a year later, and I'm still not completed. Under the same section. I don't want to over overstate my time here. Okay, Article Four subsection, paragraph two, completion of remaining work after substantial completion of contractor shall neglect its use or fail to complete the remaining work within the contract times as duly adjusted pursuant to the contract. For completion and readiness for final payment, contractor shall pay one thousand dollars for each day that expires after such time until the work is completed and ready for final payment. Is North Augden City currently collecting one thousand dollars a day for grants inability to finish?
John, I think I know the answer to that, but uh, I would you respond?
Uh, we are not. At this point, we haven't exercised that option in the contract because of the the drought. I mean, the stuff that mostly isn't completed is all the landscaping stuff that the, uh, what do they call it? The force majeure loss recovered because there wasn't secondary water and all the implications that came from that. But I would agree, we're probably well beyond the point where they should be done at this point.
Let's, let's talk to them about that provision in the contract. Thanks again for coming.
Um, what do I do if my if my concerns are not resolved? This is my final question.
Well, uh, I can't answer that question, but uh, you know, resolve is surely in the eyes of the beholder. So I I guess knowing the expectations is is important and uh, I'm not sure that the expectation was one of perfection, but I think it was restoration, so. Um, but thank you very much.
Still not done.
Correct.
Um. I'm frustrated, Mayor and Council members. Uh, anything that you could do in the end, phone calls? Um, with you concerned.
We'll have John look at that provision and have discussion and credit. Okay.
David Schopfer, North Augden. Um, I think I sent you all an email this afternoon. Um, there's an area sidewalk, the west side of Washington between seventeen hundred and eighteen hundred. I've come up here and talked about it a few times. It's disgusting. There's green algae. I mean, just it's like a ten-foot section that's just horrible. The water's like this, this deep. And there's at least two areas of that sidewalk where the the bushes and the weeds are completely blocking the sidewalk. You have to walk through them. And and I quit complaining because I thought it's probably not going to be addressed until the new developer gets in there and starts doing something. But last week I was walking by there. And as I passed the disgusting area, and I clipped pictures, you've got to admit, that's disgusting. As I passed that area, a lady was coming in the opposite direction, coming towards this area. An older lady, well dressed, in a motorized wheelchair. And I was so embarrassed that that is what we have there for her to to get herself around. And I just, what needs to be done? It it's somebody's responsibility to make sure that's taken care of.
Mr. Call, you reported that, uh, was there some reason for delayed action there?
Um, the original delay was because of the bankruptcy and but I'm not sure what's holding up the wa- the standing water. I can't remember what Public Works said was the issue there, but code enforcement would be the one in charge of the weeds, so I can mention to those two groups.
Councilmember Swanson.
If I remember right, the standing water there's uh, from a an old county line. It it's not a city issue, is the is my last understanding. That the the source of the water is from another utility that we don't control.
But I guess it's our responsibility to keep the sidewalk clear and
The weeds and stuff, absolutely.
And if, you know, even though we don't have control of the water, it would seem like we should be talking very earnestly to the its time viewer, whoever it is.
And I I know we have in the past. I don't know why.
Mr. Call, can you follow up on that and see if there's any reason for delay while we can do this with that along?
Yes, I, now that uh, Councilman Swanson mentions that, it might have had something to do with when the season ends and what they can get in and fix. Because of what they have to shut off, but I'll double check it.
You wouldn't, then? Just uh, she's trying to send this email with the information.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Brenda Ashdown, North Augden. Um, I hesitate to say anything, but I've been to these meetings and I wish Mr. Shoup was still here. I've been to all of the meetings when he's made his comments and I, uh, first I was quite annoyed with him, but to listen to him tonight. Um, he had very good restraint. I don't know that I would have had the same kind of restraint. Have I waited for a year? And I kind of feel like, um, you're not, you're, uh, you're not helping him. You're not, he's not seeing any sympathy on your face. He's not saying any understanding. The comment that he got tonight was, well, we didn't expect perfection. I don't know that he's asked for that. He's asked for some help and I I don't know. Has any of you gone to his office and maybe knocked on his door and looked at what he's, what he's questioning? Thank you. Good. Well, I just, I feel very bad for him because uh, I I would feel the same way. I think any of us would feel the same way. If our front yard was in a condition that we don't, we're not happy with. That we had been told would be restored to what it was. And right now, I um, I appreciate that all of you are looking at me. Um, I didn't see that with Mr. Shoup. And I think that's also got to be very hard for him to feel like, guys don't even care. And that's the feeling that I got when he made his comments today and that he should have to come three times over a year span to get even some understanding from his city council. I think he's a little sad. Thank you.
Uh, Randy, we're in North Augden. Uh, to ca- to kind of add to the subject Doug was talking about, I would just like to add on a positive note that I think one of the most valuable things our city offers is that green don't that we have in the city. And for a cost, I come, uh, ten and a half years ago, I moved from a city that would charge over ten times the amount that we have to pay to put our refugees in there, so uh, even though we may not be picking it up right now, um, it it is a wonderful asset our city has and I just want to say I appreciate it.
Anyone else see? John, someone on the line, please?
Uh, we do have Susan Susan Kilborn online.
Hey, Susan?
Huh, you thought I was done?
Oh. I had the speaker muted, so.
Okay, um, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, two things real quick. First of all, Mr. Anderson brought up something that caused me to want to ask, um, are we gonna have our beloved um, leaf truck sucker upper this fall? Because pretty soon, you know, the leaves are gonna fall and I'm old. So I'm wondering if we have not given that truck up or whether it's broken and can I come down and fix it, give it an oil change?
Let me, let me interrupt you. We had that discussion just a few minutes ago about how that will work and what it'll start and end. So you must have stepped away for a moment, but I'd be happy to update you on that.
Never mind.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, you can stop now, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. Also, um, Dr. Shoup is a personal friend of mine. He is my vet. I love him. He has a valid point. Thank you, Brenda Ashdown, for supporting him. I do as well. I'm gone.
Thank you, Susan.
Okay, anyone else who'd like to comment? Now we're going to close the public comments. Uh, council, uh, do you have any comments this week? Like to add that haven't been discussed? Councilmember seven?
Yeah, I actually, uh, Scott brought up a pickleball courts earlier. I actually had a citizen reach out to me who operates a concrete business. Who is willing to get the contribution of all of the concrete to be able to put in some pickleball courts. Last time I mentioned it to Tiffany, she said, you know, we don't have any, you don't have any space in any of the parks for pickleball courts. Would that be accurate? John, would that be accurate that we don't have any space to fit in a couple of courts somewhere?
Uh, so black spaces is hard to come by. It's usually occupied by fields. Um, but so if you have a specific location in mind, we would be happy to look at it, but we typically don't put concrete too close to football and soccer fields because of the danger of people coming off the building impacting concrete.
And it might be, we replace some facilities that aren't utilized as much as maybe pickleball would be. Um, but you know, maybe Scott will find a flat place in his search of city property. You know, because we do get a lot of demand uh, for pickleball courts.
They'd go well next to the BMX track.
Well, he's he's volunteered to take care of the concrete part of it. That's awesome. So we would only have to give provide like the nets and so forth. Maybe some lights, I mean, maybe some lights, maybe some lights. And I know we can get those at a reasonable price, but uh, I know because my neighbor bought some and they're in my bedroom. We'll talk about that. Um, and then Brandon and uh, Scott, will you remind me where are we at with the Wayne's Guard secret situation?
The last I heard, they're just basically waiting to mark now. So the the cost of everything for construction was really high, so Wayne's Guard has just sort of paused on that project last that I saw him.
Okay, so they hadn't decided to do any kind of escrow?
No, I mean, at this point, they're just sort of waiting to take next steps until they decide whether they're gonna build that project or not.
Okay, and then just last not, last but not least, I didn't think about this till after John Key sat down, but so going forward, what would be? What would be, what is that gonna look like for them? I mean, will there be an analysis of price for the ground?
Though, so the things, they'll have to be a public hearing for the declaring that property surplus. Uh, we have to do an analysis of price. Um, that type of stuff is sometimes hard to evaluate. Um, because you can't build on it and it doesn't have a lot of market value, but it has some value to the neighbors. Um, so those are kind of the next steps, but I think we probably declare it as or do the hearing for surplus first. And march down that path as we talk about value. Um, so I I hate to give throughout, but not number value, but it'll I mean, probably what it ends up being is what's the, what's the value difference in the two lots, once they get the the property added to them and it's probably less than what it would be if the lots, if it was a lot itself, does that make sense? A lot itself might be worth ten bucks a foot and little added property might be two bucks a square foot. Like we just, but we'd happen to praise or give us some information on it.
Okay, so we could probably have some ideas, John, by end of October, maybe, something like that.
Well, we can schedule a hearing for this for, I just, we just need ten days so we could do it on the twenty-seventh.
Okay. So, thank you.
John, I just received some communication about citizens not being clear on the leaf uh, truck utilization, so let's make sure we as clear as we can be on that, and as we talked about the communication, let's make sure of that.
Nice.
Okay, anyone else? Council staff? John?
Um. Haven't written down. I've been like waiting and waiting. Oh my goodness. Uh, well, here's, here's a, uh, the planning commission is working on wall heights, so that'll be coming into the council soon for retaining walls. Uh, tied to the discussion with um the Chris Pulver and the Brandy. Uh, the flowers on Washington are down. We're not watering them anymore. Um, and then the I'm not sure if I told this, but they did find the box the flag was stolen from, but they haven't found the flag. Um, so they're, they're doing their best on that and we'll keep you updated as we hear more. Oh, and then, like, I will, I will respond uh, to Susan Kilborn via email, but the reason we don't let anybody post on our Facebook page is because we would be inundated with advertisements and things and we would not legally have the ability to to filter any of that out, meaning as soon as you let one person post on your page, you have to let everybody. And you can't censor it at all. But if it's only the city posting, then we don't, then that's, it's allowed for us to do that where we, we don't have to open the door for everyone. We do allow comments and people can post comments and things. Um, but it's, it's just one of those things where um, the the official city page, that's always been independent of all the other pages, including the the previous page uh, by the previous mayor, um, has, has continued to be independent. Um, and the idea is that everything from the city is going through there now, so.
Yeah, I think the point being, John, when you talked about this, even having a speak with the mayor, somehow we need to have that ability on the official page to get feedback. I don't know if it's on the one more of Augden or if it can be some category, but I think the substance of the discussion is, is, you know, how can uh, citizens know, respond, give us information that may be beneficial, so. You know, if you'd respond to Susan, that'd be good. Okay, anything else? Uh, I do have one thing that I would ask John to talk to Chief Quinn about. There's a lot of frustration at four hundred east and thirty-one hundred north. With people who are trying to comply, waiting in lines to turn right and people coming around them in the no-turn lane. Um, so if you could, uh, maybe uh, probably the best way to let the Uh, probably the best way to let the public know that that's not a turn lane at the current time, not when we expand the road. Open to have one, but uh. Probably the best way for them to know that it's not a turn lane is to. Have our officers give them a warning or. Whatever, I'm not proposing taking, but we do have a problem there with frustration with citizens.
If I may, I can address that one.
Perfect.
Alfred Lopez, more than PD. Um, so we began doing a lot of warnings. And then it got to the point where there were so many that we actually started giving citations for it. And at that point, or, or a judge said that was basically dismissing them. Um, because he understood the citizens' frustration. So we were asked to step back on that specific enforcement.
Would you ask the judge to get with me, please?
I wasn't, I'll never hear.
John, we asked, asked the judge, John, to get with me, please, because I'm not happy with that response. Councilmember Swanson?
I, I think it would be beneficial to, similar to what we did with the, the. Double double island right there by Lee's. Turning left onto Pleasant View Drive there. Um, if we did some striping across there. To make it a little more obvious that it's not a, a lane of any type. Um. But yeah, I, I nearly had my mirror taken off today by somebody. Who decided they were going to come along and there were three or four of us that had our right signal on and. A very large truck came blowing up there and. It was pretty close.
Yeah, there's frustration there, so thanks for the information.
I'll, uh, I'll, I'll ask the department heads to evaluate that and let you know their recommendation.
That's all fine and well, John, but it's a no turn lane. And it's frustrating to citizens, so. Um. You know, we can surely change it if we want, but we're not gonna enforce the law. We probably shouldn't have it.
I, I, I'm just trying to circle back to the idea that we don't make decisions here that cost money. If there's not a budget for it, like the striping, for example. So I just want to make sure that we're. That, uh, that they, they don't, I, and there's probably the budget for it, but I just don't want it to be a hundred thousand dollar thing next time.
No, well, probably the easiest way to enforce it is to communicate, educate. And let those, uh, suffer the consequences who opt not to, uh, comply. But first we. You know, communicating, educating, uh. You know, we're shortly not trying to be judicial brand things, but uh, I would like to have that discussion. So, okay. Is there anything else? Councilmember Swanson?
But just an update on the flag. Uh, there, there was some confusion as to which flag was stolen. It wasn't the major. The big giant one that we fly in the canyon every year was one of the lieutenants, thirty by sixty. And within about three days of it being reported missing, there were donations that came in. One from a business and then for some other individuals, well in excess of. What was needed to replace the flag, so the flag's being replaced with some improvements that will make it even. Easier to carry in parades and more sturdy in the future.
So you're proposing a strategy there that that's how all the flags?
No, I'm not proposing that.
Excellent information. Anything else? If not, I can seek the market to adjourn.
Mayor, uh, item thirteen?
Oh, that's been canceled, I'm sorry. If that's not on your agenda.
Uh, it's even better.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, is that, it's not on your agenda, but that's been canceled.
It's, it's on the one that everybody has here.
Yeah.
No, we.
Is it still canceled on yours?
No, no.
Okay, well, for information, item number thirteen has been canceled. It's on mine, and I apologize. But I thought that was replicated with the others. So, uh.
In that case, move to adjourn.